Call the meeting to order.
The House of Americans.
Goodbye.
This state is so America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lisa, for keeping us on our toes. Okay, review the agenda. There was an amendment to the agenda to include the Otter Creek Watershed Mosquito District as a guest. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda's approved. Review the minutes from December 12th, 2022. Minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Zoomed.
Second?
There should be a, there's a bit of a typo in there.
Huh?
Under review and approve agenda, the motion was seconded by Linda Hogan.
Oh.
Can we change that?
Minor detail.
Yeah, if you say so. Other than that, carry on.
Okay, is there a motion to sec, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved with the correction. Any open public comment?
Yeah, just Phil. And then I think Butcher was going to step in.
Okay.
Just because we have the speech in there, so they can.
So, thank you for giving me a second here. I just want to let you know that next week we go back into session. I'll be up here usually Tuesdays or Friday, but if you need something, what's your normal night going to be? Is it normally Wednesday? Or whenever you get around to it?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth.
Monday.
Okay, Monday nights are, yeah, I'm used, we're home on Mondays, so if you need something, call me or I'll just pop in and see what's happening. And, yeah, I figured I'd be here today because Michael used my name at the last select board meeting, so I figured I'd better get down to fend myself. So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for showing up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Town crew did a great job with the storm. That was kind of nasty.
Rink opened up today.
Did I? I saw the lights on last night when I went by, so that's good.
It'll be busy.
Unfortunately, it's gonna, temperatures are gonna rise this week, so might be short-lived.
Phil said the drive-by lighted truck parade was nice. Oh, that's what Charlotte said.
Well, I want to get into Doug Port, Doug from the...
You want him to go next?
Yeah, then he will.
All right.
Discussion, not action.
Sure.
We'll go to the Otter Creek Watershed Mosquito District.
Thank you. Good evening. Doug Perkins, for those of you who don't know me, Chair of the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District Board of Trustees. Here tonight, two purposes. Wanted to give you a quick summation of what happened this last year, and to talk about some new information that's come to our attention that might be of interest to you. And secondly, to answer any questions you might have about what the mosquito district is doing for you or might be doing for you in the future. So this was a well-above-average mosquito season for us, which is in sharp contrast to what the rest of the Northeast experienced. Because of the drought, their numbers were pretty much down hard this year, but not in this area. We captured over 70,000 mosquitoes in the mosquito traps that we put out, which is about a high-end year for us. What that meant was that we continued a program that we started last year, spraying each of our mosquito roots once a week. And that seemed to keep them under control. And the feedback we've had from other select boards and from the, from the general public is that, in fact, things were kept pretty well under control this year. The pesticide general permit that we operate under is a five-year permit issued by the EPA to the state of Vermont, and then subsequently issued to us after we file a whole lot of paperwork with them. 2022 was the fifth anniversary, so this was a renewal year for us. We submitted all the paperwork in August. Our permit was approved in October, and it was approved without public comment. What that means is that no one has standing to sue us for a permit not properly issued to us. Unlike five years ago, as you'll recall, we did get sued because a group claimed that we had not submitted sufficient documentation to justify issuing the permit. That lawsuit ultimately cost the taxpayers in the towns $60,000 in legal fees, and then the suit was withdrawn with prejudice. We don't have to face that this year, which is a good thing. The board has elected the same officers for this coming year as we served last year. I'll be Chair. Jeff Shulman is going to be the Vice Chair again. He also is the President of the Lake Dunmore Fern Lake Association. He's also the President of the Sugar Bush Ski Ambassadors Club and several other organizations. Brad Laws, who you may know, Laws AG up there in Brandon, is going to be the Treasurer, but he has made it quite clear that this is going to be his last year as Treasurer, and that come November next year, we need a new Treasurer. And that's important to what I want to talk to you about a little bit later. The, and Steve Belcher from Pittsburgh is the Secretary again this year. Does a great job. We have an algorithm that we use to, quote-unquote, "equitably assess" our expenses to all of the member towns. That algorithm is, as it presently exists, heavily driven by some census data related to the number of households in each town. The census data we've been using up to this year was 2010 and 2,000 census data. So, 2020 census data became available this year. Great. We plugged the new numbers in and absolutely threw up all over the results. It was not an equitable distribution of our expenses, because two towns had their population increase, number of households increased fairly substantially, and three towns of the member towns, population dropped. And it, the result of the algorithm did not look at all like the effort that we put into each town. So we said, oh, this ain't gonna work. Now, for this next year, we kept the old algorithm and the old data, because everybody was happy with that for the last 20 years. They'd been very happy with it. But starting with fiscal year 25, so not this coming July, but the one after that, we formed an ad hoc committee, Bruce was a member of that committee, to take a look at maybe developing something better that would, in fact, equitably distribute our costs. We did that. The board has accepted those results. Again, those results will take effect in July of 2024 for fiscal year 25. So, up, so we're all set for next year. Everybody's happy for next year, and then we'll let it take its effect. One of the things we're waiting for, of course, is to see what Proctor is going to do about maybe joining us or not. And that would influence the actual proportions of the percentages each town has to pay. So, that's why we decided to hold off a year to see what you folks are going to do or not do about joining. I had the pleasure of attending the Northeast Mosquito Control Association Conference held down in Massachusetts earlier in December. There was a lot of discussion about ticks. Hmm. At the mosquito conference. Hmm. Okay. And that's because ticks are becoming an increasingly health, increasing health concern for humans. And their population is expanding rapidly. It now covers the entire east third and half of the United States, a lot of the west coast, and is expanding into the Midwest. There was a representative there from the CDC, and he said, hmm, we think that mosquito control districts would be the logical organization to go to if we want to get involved in controlling ticks or dealing with them as a health issue. So that's why I'm bringing that to your attention. That's the CDC's thinking. The state of Vermont folks were there and went, hmm, okay. Now, there are only two mosquito control districts in Vermont, as you're well aware. The Lemon Fair District, which is just a little to the west of us, is the other one. One point that the gentleman from the CDC made is, we've known for years what to do about ticks. And right now, there is an awful lot of surveillance going on, including here in Vermont. So you know where the ticks are. There's an awful lot of research going on about what diseases they carry and how they pass them along to humans. That's great. There's almost nothing going on with respect to controlling the tick population. These days, if somebody wants to deal with ticks using pesticides, they have to call Orkin or one of their ilk and have them come out and spray their private land. And that's about the extent of what's going on. So it's very small and effective for those land, those landowners, but not as for a wider population. And that is everything that I wanted to talk to you about. Do you have any questions for me?
Anyone have questions?
No. The lake has six inches of ice on it.
Does it?
It does.
Great.
And we haven't walked on it today.
That's what I said, six inches.
How long did you lose your power for?
60 hours.
Ooh, that was a little...
But it somehow clobbered my heat pump as well, so we've been well out of peak heat since Christmas Eve.
Wow.
Fortunately, we have wood stove.
So there's going to be no change in the, in the, in the expected amount for FY '24?
The amount for you folks for FY '24 is 17,500. That was previously communicated to you, I believe, so.
So then if we decided after to change, then it would be reallocated and it would be a different figure once you know we're part of it?
Your figure for fiscal year '24 is 17,500. If you decide to join us, then the new algorithm would go into effect for fiscal year '25. And, and I can tell you right now, and Bruce probably has already told you, that your percent of the overall expenses would be about 9% out of the total. So. And that's based on the new algorithm, which we, we wrapped you into, just because we're hoping, quite frankly, that you do decide to join us. So my question back to you is, what are your, what's your thinking on that issue? I asked you that a year ago, and you said, well, COVID, let's, let's think about it for another year. Well, another year has gone by.
I don't know. I guess it's just weighing the benefits, you know? What's the pros and cons of joining or not? I mean, if we don't net going forward, are we out completely?
Nope.
Or do we continue on as we are now?
At, at the moment, the sense of the board is that we'll continue to provide service to you if you want to stay as a service recipient of ours. I would like to see you join for a couple of reasons. One, because these gentlemen attend all the meetings, and I'd like to get them a vote at the table. They have some good things to offer to the board, and that would be good. The other thing is that if you were a member, then you would have three representatives, two regulars and an alternate. And I would hope that amongst all the vacancies that we have right now, somebody's going to find a person with a financial or business or accounting background who's ready, willing, and able to step into the Treasurer role a year out. That's, that's what I'm really looking for. Right now, there are vacancies in Salisbury, Brandon, and Pittsburgh, and then potentially here in Proctor. So. I've been preaching to the tribe of select boards about this this month. Yes, Tom?
9% would, dollar-wise, what would that come, roughly, roughly? Just so we got an idea.
That's, that depends on what our budget looks like in 2024, and I can't tell you what that is right now. The agreement that all the member towns have signed says that our budget can go up no more than 5% in a year. And this year, our budget did go up 5% because of inflation that we've all felt. I can't tell you what that's going to be next year. It all depends on how things go in terms of how much we spend on controlling mosquitoes. This year, we spent quite a bit. If it's a light year next year, and, you know, things back off, then we might not have to raise the rate so much. We'll see.
So could you, based on this year's budget, give us an idea what the 9% of that budget would be?
I think so.
I'm very happy with your services here in Proctor. Makes life very nice during the summer.
Yes.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you. I'd have to do some math.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. If you want, just send it to Michael or something.
Yeah, I will.
Just a curious.
So, so what would it be? Next year, we're charging you 17,5. I think you'd, you'd probably come in a little bit under that as a 9%. Actually, our overall budget is 236... Hang on. 236, 329. So take 9% of that. Except you can't quite do that, because we get money from the state and we get money from the Lake Dunmore Fern Lake Association that offsets what the towns have to pay. So back, take 236, 329, back out 75,000, and do the math.
Got 14,519.
Backing out that 75,000.
Yeah, backing things out. And then...
All right, because it'd be over.
You would be liable for a buy-in to our capital plant. And it would be 9% of our capital plant. And our capital plant right now is valued at, and I think I also ran out, $361,058. Ignore the $58 if you want to. So you would have a buy-in of about 32,700, and that's typically over four years. So divide that by four, and that would be your annual contribution. And that's assuming the 5%, but 9%... Yes, it is. Yep. So the process goes something like this, just to reiterate what the Vermont law says. You folks, the select board, obviously have to make a decision as to whether to include an article for the town meeting, asking the townsfolk whether they want to join. The town votes to join. Then the mosquito district Board of Trustees has to vote to accept you. And if we do that, and you have voted to join, then it goes to the other member towns as to whether they want to admit you. And that's a, that's a...
So correct.
That's a two-thirds. And they're given a couple of months to decide whether they want to do that or not. I wouldn't expect them to say, no, but you never know. Are you friends with your neighbors? In any case, once that hurdle is over, then you're full members, you have seats at the board, and we go on from there.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions?
So just to be clear, if you join, it'd be roughly $23,000 for four years?
$32,000 for four years.
I think you're including the 9%.
So he said you take 32 divided by four, that's about 81, 75.
Yes.
Are you, do you also include the 9% into that?
That's how we, that's how we got the $32,000, 9% of our capital plant.
Right. I'm talking about the 14,519, the original 9%.
That's year-to-year. But that's based on this year's budget.
Right. So it would roughly be $23,000 for four years?
If everything stayed the same.
Yeah.
So what's the bid of the, other than having seats at the table to join the district? What would change or benefit the district?
You would have then a equity stake in our capital plant.
And what's the benefit to us, other than just being a service receiver for that?
You've got more control over what the mosquito district's doing right now. You have no say in what we do.
But we could still, it, it doesn't change how you can provide the service to us?
No, it doesn't at the present time. But if, but if the board decided all of a sudden that we couldn't afford, for some reason or another, to provide service down here, then we could just stop.
And what about before, when they came back from a meeting, they said that if people didn't want to be sprayed, there was going to be some change to that, and there's never been any follow-up of that. So that you used to come out and put stakes up that said, he doesn't want to be sprayed, but my property's being sprayed.
We still do, we still do that, and...
There was a conversation when they came back from a meeting that that was changing, that would be the responsibility of property owners or perhaps the town, because the expense was too great to you as a district?
That was just, we were talking just here. We were trying to reduce our cost.
Yes. Okay, there's been no change in the district policy about no spraying. And, and I don't anticipate any change in that policy. So the landowners let us know that they don't want to be sprayed. We come out and put stakes in the ground to show the limits of that property. And then the drivers, as they go around, are watching for those stakes, and since they're the ones that put them in the ground anyways, they pretty much know where they are. And they turn the machine off when they get to the first stake, and they don't turn it on until they get past the cycle.
We were, we had talked about reducing our costs by...
The cost last year to put those stakes in the ground and pull them back out again was way higher than some of us, Brad Laws and I in particular, thought it should have been. One of the things that we've done is I've told Will to go out and buy a stake puller, so it becomes a one-person job, real easy, and doesn't take any time at all to pull those stakes back out of the ground. Instead of, and, and I went out and pulled some stakes this year myself, and sometimes those things are in there so tight that you're there with a shovel for 15 or 20 minutes, trying to dig the thing back out of the ground. And this, they'll speed that up.
Right. One of the other things we discussed was a call-in sprays, you know, because of my barbecue, you know?
Yep, yep.
We talked about charging for that or something. But that was just...
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a discussion, but, yeah.
It didn't go anywhere.
Came up at the last board meeting, because some others were interested in having us charge for special spray requests. And the sense of the board and the final vote on that was not to change our policy.
Where are the stakes located on properties?
They're on, on the road, whether it's a public road or a private road, at the corners of the property.
Okay.
So that we know where to turn off and start up again.
So are they kind of like in the right-of-way, like, I'm just thinking, why do you, why remove them every year unless...
Because the snowplows will take them out otherwise.
I was wondering how close they were.
And they cost about $10 apiece, and we lose enough of them in a year anyways from the mower, the mowing machines. So, that's why.
They're reflective, so the driver at night picks up red and green. He knows when the storm's there.
And the other thing is that there's no guarantee that somebody that's a no-spray last year is going to be a no-spray again this year, because of ownership changes or changes of heart. So, so we have to start over again each year with a fresh list of who does not want to be sprayed and mark accordingly.
Just give them the stakes and let them pound them in the ground.
If they, if we did that, the stakes would be probably a quarter mile down the road in each direction. And I'm not kidding about that. Because the people that don't want to be sprayed really don't want to be sprayed.
Right, why do you?
Do you all have an automatic accounting system? Are you using any kind of software or just somebody kind of plugging numbers into Excel? And that's just...
It's not Excel. We use QuickBooks.
Okay, QuickBooks.
Yeah. And we have a bookkeeper.
Okay.
Who does a lot of that work.
Oh.
But the treasurer still needs to be pretty savvy with respect to finances.
Are you looking for that job?
No. Volunteer?
We're just curious.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much for coming in.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thanks, Doug. Appreciate you coming down.
Oh, yeah. My pleasure. And at any time, if you have any questions at all. We've got two representatives attending all the meetings anyways, and, you know, you've got my number.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else? Questions or anything?
Doug Perkins.
Very, motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fiscal '24 water budget review.
There, so there have been no changes to this since our last review.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve it?
If the board's ready to approve it, I'm ready for the motion.
There are motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Water Department budget in the amount of $427,220 for presentation to the voters at town meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry on. I read it slowly, Lisa, so you could...
No, I'm still gonna...
We can do it.
All right.
But this, this goes to the voters at town meeting?
Oh, do the enterprise...
The budget does. The budgets do.
This will be my first...
We vote on the budget at...
Okay.
Yeah, it can be turned down.
You always vote on budget at town meeting?
Yeah, but is it a separate article, I think is what she's asking?
Oh.
It is a separate article.
I believe so. Sewer, water, taxes?
Well, but, well...
No. No. We've, we've never voted on the, on, because water and sewer are you, based on user fees.
Right.
So everybody doesn't have water and sewer. That's why they're not voted. The select board sets the budget, sets the user fees. We don't vote on these at town meeting.
But the budget, the budget we do, the general fund we do.
You vote on the general fund, and you delineate for roads and highways or maintenance or whatever.
We just scrapped that last part of the motion.
Okay.
So.
So we'll reiterate and say, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 Water Department budget in the amount of $427,220?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Pump monitoring update.
I thought that was a savvy motion. That was, it's needed for general fund, but not for that.
Good practice.
Yeah.
Okay. So, pump monitoring update.
Yeah, let me get to this. We've got some kind of heavy stuff to go over here. The, Aldrich and Elliott, who's doing the monitoring for us on the wellhouse, has sent an update report. I think the, the most confusing part is that, the, am I talking about the right thing? Am I right?
Any memo?
The memo?
Sorry, the pump monitoring data, yeah.
Yes.
So, the measured flow rate from the pump is 250 gallons per minute, but if you were to look at the models and the elevation of the discharge and all that, it should be 425 gallons per minute. So, the engineers have listed some action steps that they're going to take over the next month or two. One is they're going to confirm the, the level of the aquifer, the, the water.
Yep.
Next, they're gonna, they're gonna have Franklin Electric to come out here and just see if we need to add some surge protection to the facility. And then the third is just do a thorough inspection of the motor. We've got one motor that's been pulled out before and is sitting there. So Franklin, the idea is that Franklin Electric can look at the motor, see the specs on it, and then combine it to our pump. And, and so, so that's in the foreseeable future are the next steps we're going to take to solve the wellhouse mystery. But Aldrich and Elliott are really good with keeping up. They, and, and they've had to, they had to have been telling the truth, because I don't know how else they would know this. They saw it in the minutes that we, that I'd mentioned, that we were hopefully getting an update. They saw it in the minutes that we, that I'd mentioned that we were hopefully getting an update soon. They must be reading our minutes.
Yeah.
Pretty good service.
Yes.
Yes.
We've always had good luck with them.
Yep. Definitely.
Leading copper rule revision.
Actually, so Butch and I have been communicating a good bit lately, which is really helpful. He's been letting me know about different grants and stuff that have been going on. And I actually sent this his way as well, so he knows a little bit about the copper rule revision. This, this isn't singling out Vermont or Procter. It's, it's nationwide. So late 2020, a final version of the lead and copper rule revision was released. And, and then it was frozen by the Biden administration. And, and then it was released again after comment from different environmental agencies. And now that release, the state has issued a service line inventory and a service line replacement plan for towns our size, so 1,000 people in a, will be eligible for loans. Some people will get the entire loan forgiven, and then some communities won't. A lot of that will depend on household income, load, load of middle-income areas and stuff like that. So the, this all has to be, this, so the service line replacement plan has to be done by October 16th, 2024. In the plan, you have, you have to, contained in the plan has to be a strategy for identifying lead status of each service. That is from the main to the inside of the house. So we're not just talking about the public end of the, of the service lines, talking public and private. So whoever we have to come here to, to, whoever we contract to work out, actually has to go into homes and take pictures of their plumbing. Okay, so, and then a procedure for conducting full lead line replacement, strategy for informing customers on how the replacement will happen, what the procedures are for flushing the lines after the work has been complete, and then a funding strategy to replace these lines after the plan has been issued. It's just really important that this is on everybody's radar. I've got a meeting with Aldrich and Elliott tomorrow just to kind of discuss the next steps. The state has already released a loan application for this program.
Loan?
Yeah. And I couldn't even, if, if I, I couldn't even put a number in space on how much it would cost. I'm hoping, I'm hoping A and E might have a ballpark figure for me tomorrow.
Would you be leaning towards contracting something like that out or having our people run to private homes or...
I think it would be a lot of work for our crew to take on.
Yeah. Our insurance company would probably want to step up.
I think even if we do contract someone out, it's, well, more than just I think. The state has been clear that it's going to take a lot of energy from localities, even if you do contract someone out because the contractor's not going to come here and dig up every single line. They're going to want to research every single document you've got in-house. And so they're going to exhaust every resource the town has before they start putting a lot of boots on the ground.
Yeah, at least they're not going to be concerned about that, you know, the gooseneck out at the, out at the main.
I did pick up on that, yes.
Yeah, you know, you couldn't possibly dig up every connection.
Yeah. I guess, I guess where you get, where you could get in trouble here is they call out galvanized lines as well. So any galvan, galvan, galvanized lines downstream from existing lead or historic lead will have to be replaced because they're assuming it's been contaminated with lead. So I'm, I'm guessing I'll have an update at our next elect board meeting after a meeting with Aldrich and Elliott.
Yeah, that's going to be... So, you know, at least they're going to be concerned with the piping in the house.
Yeah, it sounded like it, it would go up to where it teed inside of the home. Like it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the whole house replacing lead fixtures.
No, it's just coming through the basement walls, so to speak. But...
That way I understand.
Yeah.
So a lot to digest there.
The orchestra with the infrastructure, so if that's all taken care of and then somebody has lead pipes in the house. I don't know. One more thing to cross this line.
Oh, yeah.
The fourth thing that the state has decided to test for that they don't have any relation for.
It's, it's one of those scary emails that I get, you know, that just kind of show up.
Okay, does anybody else have anything underwater?
We, we certainly must test for lead at, you know, some point during the year or whatever. So would that help us at all?
I, I re-watched the training today, and the only time lead testing was brought up is it, they emphasized that it could be away and they, in bold, underlined "could", to test whether a, a service is lead without having to dig it up. If there's any suspicion that it might be a lead service, you know, installed prior to 19, whenever, you could, you could run a lead test.
Seems easier and cheaper.
Yeah, I don't think it's their preferred method of doing it, but yeah, I agree.
Listen, you're talking about galvanized pipe.
Well, also, does it say in here the, what the particles are either? I mean, what, what, what is the number?
Parts per million?
Yeah, because just like they're doing now with PCBs, it's a whole different, Vermont has it, an entirely different way of figuring. And it depends on what kind of structure that you're looking at also, that it depends on whether it's multifamily, library, school. Schools already tested, have been tested for lead. Private, you know, businesses and things like that. So I didn't see where any of that was all delineated in that handout either. No.
Oh, yeah, I, no, I, I'm not...
And don't we test regularly for copper? Don't we have a number of houses that would delineate in town that are tested regularly for copper? Because I think I know four of them that I could speak up.
Copper or lead?
Copper.
Copper? Oh, I'm sure. So I... So what's your question?
Well, the question is, one, it doesn't delineate particles, right? Like what the particles are per million or whatever for lead. It doesn't delineate if there's any kind of difference between the type of structure. Because it talks in here about that in their examples, but it doesn't delineate that in here.
I think it's why they don't want you to test for it. Because, because they, maybe, maybe that's why, just because they don't have any kind of set parts per million. They, they, they are not encouraging you to, to delineate, or they're not recommending lead testing as an investigative tool for this. And I imagine for that very reason, what you're bringing up.
But doesn't it seem like people should kind of push back instead of the state just always telling us this is what we're doing and never questioning them? I mean, you'd think they've got to have some gauge as to far as like, okay, you know?
That's not a state program?
Yeah, it's a federal program.
And we don't know yet what the federal part of the community, the state of the state or the federal community that just completed all the schools. And we did that right, right at the, right at the faucet, faucet.
Right.
They detected the school right at the faucet. They could detect. They could go as far as detecting somebody that uses long solder when they, when they solder a pipe together. It's all sensitive about testing. I can almost guarantee you in your water system, you have lead in all the old services that were installed prior to whatever date you're talking about, probably prior to 494. Because items on the proper system, it was for a long time. And, you know, leak, it was the lead pipe that went from the water main to the shop. And that's the way that, that pipeline was installed. You may, you may have encountered that.
Yeah, that was done for years here.
Yeah, it was a long way of installing a waterless because you gave that cushion.
Exactly.
Tract it many.
Yep.
So, yeah, I, I, I think I'm ready. There wouldn't be a lot of work yet. So we get to talk to engineers in the state, actually. We have our doctorates on yet, so I'd be ready.
Do you have any other questions? Hey, is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She carries. Hey. Fiscal 24 wastewater budget review. For a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 wastewater department budget in the amount of $402,300.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michael, is there, Brent, any, since we did the, you know, the Meadow Street project or the Willis Street project, has there been any difference in the pump readings as far as infiltration that's dropped down in comparison to what it was before?
I could check. I'm not sure what kind of monitoring devices they have there to, to check flow, to, to collect flow data from the pump station.
Yeah, that might be something that might ask Aldrich and Elliott if there's a way to, to do that. Seems though there ought to be. Hopefully, we've cut down on the pump run times and, and flow.
I'd imagine there's a meter in there somewhere, but I'm not sure. Ice, ice and stall flow meters.
We didn't have to truck anything this last big rainstorm, so that's knock on wood.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there was probably a lot of infiltration down there in that, in the Garden of Eden.
Oh, yeah.
When it rained real hard before they replaced it.
Yeah, but if, if they could come up with, you know, either Aldrich or Elliott or our guys could come up, it might be interesting to have a comparison to know whether all that money was well spent.
I looked. I got rid down there, pump station flow meter. So hopefully I'll have some information at the next meeting.
Yeah.
When you meet with them?
Tomorrow.
What time?
My calendar. I, I usually set stuff up for 10:00.
Okay, anything else under sewer? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and back to the select board meeting? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Apartmental reports.
So I've included my town manager's report in your packets along with the treasurer's report, the sheriff's report, the public works forming. Apart from my report, I thought it would be nice to do a, a mid-year budget review. I've created a bar graph here because NIMREC is a good program for keeping numbers, but it's not the best for forecasting, and I'll get into that in just a second. So what you're looking at is a mid-year review on the screen of your general fund budget. I haven't created a graph in a long time, so I thought it'd be nice to do. So the bar to the left is, is, was, and I've rounded everything up to the 10th. So the bar on the left was the approved budget at the last meeting in March. 400, 100, 1,476,140. Okay, and then the bar in the middle, and this is the important part, it's expenditures plus your reserves. So if you were looking at, at NIMREC in the expenditure report I print for you, it would look like you had more money to spend than you really do. And that's because the order doesn't come until the end of the year and, and allocate reserve funds out. So if you, so if the town has 70,000 in the fire department reserve fund, it would look like the town has 70,000 to spend, but we really don't. So we, so when I'm, when I'm looking at the budget, I'm always having to factor that stuff in, and that's what I've done in this graph. So, so the middle there is your expenditures plus your reserves. And then, and then the, the far graph, the bar on the far right is expenditures minus your tact, your non-tax revenue to date. This is also an important number because the town does receive non-tax revenue. And this includes, and I call it revenue, but it's, it's money from the state to help the highway department fund some of our improvements. It's money from our enterprise funds that goes to Celia or the treasurer's office for maintaining utility bills. And also includes some of the money we get back from grants, like the highway improvements we made. So if you look, if you're going off that number, really, to get to the FY budget, you have about, the town has about 184, uh, 840,700 left to spend. The reason I did a bar graph instead of a pie chart is because I got to throw that yellow line in there. That, that yellow line represents where we were at this time last year in expenditures. And just so you know, that line's about $10,000 thick. Okay, so, so we've spent about 10,000 more this year by this time than we have last year, but our revenue's been, been better. And, and there are smaller revenue streams like zoning permits and then listas fees. The last two numbers are really important to note, regular checking, so cash on hand this year. You have seven, the town has 758,000. Regular checking this time last year was 555,000. So the town's sitting in a pretty good financial position in, in our mid-year. Am I a question about that? Okay.
I would like the pie chart.
Well, I would have done, I was thinking of the pie chart, but I wanted to do the line. I wanted to experiment with the line. Okay. And then here's your water department budget. So that middle bar is kind of scary, but again, that includes, so quite a few different things. We, we had the, the upgrades to, well, we installed a, a line down on Gorn Bridge Road. And then we, we, we made the switch from SCADA over to Missions. And then the town bought a new motor. So it, so we had, our expenditures have gone over budget, but a lot of that money was, came out of reserve funds. So the important, the really important bar here is the one to the right, expenditures minus revenues. You're a little below where you were last year. It looks like we were overspent because we're at the halfway point, but you have to understand that I've added bonds and reserves into this. So that's why it's, it's over the halfway mark. So again, water's looking good. And then finally, this one's scary, but the expenditures for the sewer fund are just outrageous. But this is why I'm showing you it, because if you look at the NIMREC report, it would show your expenditures at 1,245,000. You say, okay, how? Well, that's because we relined about 1,000 feet of sewer that fed the Willis Street pump station. That's all alone now, so really to date remaining, we have about 181,540. Now, if you look at the bar on the right, you are above where you were last year. And that can be directly correlated to chemicals and fuel. And that's my mid-year budget report. I hope that was helpful.
Okay. So we aren't doing too bad, basically.
We're not doing bad. And then, yeah, aside from that, everything else is contained within my report. And if you have questions about it, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Not going up.
You want to talk to him?
Well, it's interesting, you know, when you mentioned Zion, that they're having problems up in St. John'sburg, so they're focusing on here.
Yeah, and they, they ordered the machinery. It's just a lackladder lag between order and receipt.
Getting it, yeah.
And they were, they, Travis Samuels, who's one of the co-owners, before he was just saying 30 jobs, but it's kind of been slowly moving up a little bit every time we talk. You know, we go 35 before he's... we go thirty-five before he's, so, yeah. And, and they contribute the upgrades that were made to the building is why they're able to kind of jump in here so much faster than the I building in St. Jay because there's been no refurbishment to that building apparently in many, many, many years. So it's a complete redo.
I know it's the sheriff's report that the first two items are identical. They have different report ID numbers, but they're identical situations, times, everything. So I didn't know if they actually charged us five hours or...
That, that could have, well, and it's two different IDs. I was thinking maybe it was a copy and paste issue.
But everything's identical on the cards.
Except for the ID.
Yeah.
Looking at that.
Anybody have any questions on Michael's report or sheriff's or the public works foreman?
Well, it's nice to see the detail in the highway department, you know, Kyle's report.
Yeah, I, I often found it hard to get a foreman to want to track things, you know, they want to be out in the field and finish a job with everybody else. But Kyle's good about stepping away and taking notes of what they've done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to look through the, the manager's report to find something that would just be incredibly interesting. We had a staff Christmas party that was, that was really the mood as catered it. Stormwater master planning kickoff.
An application with Pittsburgh Mastralum.
Yeah, I've submitted.
That's good.
Oh, the Rink Playground comes tomorrow. It didn't come today because of the weather.
Because of the weather today?
Yeah, well, it had something to do with the weekend. They, the, the company didn't get it.
We're going to store that.
We're going to keep it, the wastewater treatment plant for now and then take it over there. I asked and they said most of it will be just fine hanging out outside. There are a few boxes we might need to store inside.
Yeah, same ones that's installed, so I hope that's what.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what they said. And then, and then South Street sidewalk, that is just, that's moving right along. And anytime anybody, I've, I've gotten kind of gun shy anytime I hear easements brought up, but these are just temporary easements that are needed for the South Street sidewalk project. So I don't think we're having too hard of a time getting those.
Good, that's, uh, that's a good project.
And of course, red fire on West Street.
Yes.
Which is sad, but it was, it was almost, it was, it, it was almost an emotional, well, it could have been. It was pretty emotional to see all the stuff that got dropped off at the library. All the support that they had.
Lucky Lisa.
So, um, and...
Did she boil the dump trucks in there?
Yeah, it was a lot, it was a lot.
That, that, that's nice intentions, you know, people helping.
I guess one thing I could add to this is our general permit. We received our general permit for the wastewater treatment plant discharge permit. And that's good for five years. Requires us to do a little bit more testing than we have in the past. All right, and that's it.
Anybody have questions? Question and action items. If you want, if you view the bills as signed. How about nuisance ordinance revision? Looking at this regarding the issues we're having with chickens and pigs.
Yeah, and, and there was, I think there was some confusion on, on what body should, what should take this issue up. Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns got back to me and recommended that it, it fall under a public nuisance ordinance. And so I, I did make a revision to it and have highlighted, but I'm happy to hear feedback on it because I know it is pretty vague.
When I, the one I, I don't know if I sent you this one or not, but, I mean, just allowing, you know, swine, cattle, horses, fowl and other animals to run at large, you know, I feel like it's got to go deeper than that just because if we don't, don't allow them, they're not held to any kind of other standards. So the one that I have basically speaks more to containing them and keeping them confined rather than it's up to the homeowner to make sure they don't go on someone else's property. I mean, I just think that's the only way that you're going to resolve certain individuals having chickens not running at large.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense too.
Does it discuss the, um, the new work?
Oh, that's another thing that could be brought up, you know, there's species and there are, there are stronger ordinances that say, you know, if there's a strong odor, you've got to find a way to mitigate.
Yeah.
Put in mitigating practices.
So the one that I'm reading off of is keeping a fowl as public health nuisance. No fowl should be kept within such place or manner as to be offensive or cause a nuisance to persons residing in the vicinity and the buildings and yards should be kept deodorized by application of dry earth or some other effective absorbent or disinfectant. Our fowl so kept within the city with town limit shall be confined in an enclosure and shall not be permitted to run at large. Violation of the provisions of the sections shall constitute a public health nuisance. I think that's better. Don't you? I mean, because it, it kind of ties, you've got to do this because...
I think we should get out ahead of this a little bit, yes.
I mean, because you will have those, those homeowners who will confine them, but then you're still going to have those others that just go, well, I can have chickens and I'll call them in at night.
So, but here's my question, by only saying foul, does that mean that I want to put a cow in my backyard and pen?
Well, I have another one if you want. So, um, the keeping of swine, cattle, horses and other animals as public health nuisance. No swine shall be kept within a hundred feet of any dwelling house or street nor in such a place and manner as to be offensive for the persons residing in the vicinity and their pens and yards must be kept deodorized by the application of dried muck, dry earth or some other effective absorbent or disinfectant, provided nevertheless that no person, persons, firm, partnership, corporation or other legal entity shall keep or maintain more than four swine within the limits of the town. No cattle, goats, horses or other animals should be kept in such a place or manner as to be offensive to the person residing in the vicinity. And again, violation of the provisions of the section shall constitute a public health nuisance.
Because when we had the problem with the horses on Meadow Street, you remember, one of the issues was the linnor and the other one was the housing for them, that it wasn't, the structure wasn't safe. So that was another way that we ended up getting rid of them down there. So I think it should say something about that, like the safety of whatever they're being housed in, you know?
I'd like to see it say, you know, anything within the village limits, the old village limits, you know? You want to have fire models? Yeah. Go to the town.
Yeah, I think I just put that in there as a placeholder because we, I think the big question at the last meeting was just where it would go and I, and I think that's a, a strong ordinance, two ordinances that you have there. It doesn't speak towards the proper care, I think, as far as what we're getting at though, huh?
Well, yeah, because you kind of get around that with dogs when they, so it seems like that should be the same standard, right?
Those horses always got loose too, didn't they?
Yeah. Yeah, there were a lot of loose back there before, yeah.
Do we also want, maybe it's in the other one, but include anything as far as the files about not allowing roosters?
Well, that's already, and well, and that's something BLCT mentioned and I did a little bit of research before I reached out to them. There are a lot of towns that don't include anything about animals in their zoning bylaws, but we do. BLCT suggested, you know, not to include anything about animals in bylaws, just keep separate ordinances just because that's how most of the towns do it. But, so that's kind of a long way of saying the town already restricts, you know, roosters through the zoning bylaws. And, and it restricts how many chickens you're allowed to have. How many dogs you're allowed to have.
Right.
Dogs and cats combined?
No, that's under...
Yeah, that's in the...
It's six total dogs and cats over the age of six months.
But it does make sense it should all be in one place.
I think so too.
It does. I just wonder if it would require like, um, notice of revision for, well, I'm sure for both zoning bylaws and the ordinance.
I mean, you could keep it in the zoning, but just add that part to this nuisance because a rooster is going to be a nuisance as much as it is, you know, a zoning issue.
And the next time, next time they revise zoning, then they can just take it out.
Do you want me to give you this?
Perfect.
I didn't mean to punch it on green paper, I forgot to take it.
That's the only thing green paper you ever... What color does the red come out?
Red.
Oh, okay.
Paper's green, neat. Yeah, so I was trying to make it festive for them. So attorney's still looking at it too, so maybe if you got that to, incorporating that into this.
Mm-hmm. And, and I'd asked him too, would you suggest it to be a little bit more refined than the rest?
Right, yeah.
So I can just, I'll just can, I should just say to him and say, feedback I have from the board, how about it?
I mean, sometimes it's nice enough to have where you think, but then other times I think we need it just because people just go outside the lines. All right, so once we get back to him, we can also...
I, I bet it would be, I, I bet it would be no later than the last meeting.
Okay. All right, uh, town budget review of mid-year fiscal twenty-three budget update. You just...
Ooh, that's twenty-five.
Right, I didn't know you had that, that budget.
Apologies.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, I already did that.
Yeah, you did the mid, you did the review of the twenty-three budget.
Okay.
But now we want a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four municipal general fund budget in the amount of one million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for presentation to the voters at the town meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
I'll overshoot or I'll overshoot, it's just kind of a thing.
Or doubtful.
Yeah. Good day.
All right, print to purchase for the municipal offices, everybody saw that?
Yes.
Yeah, just for reference here, that printer was bought when I graduated high school. Long time ago. Felt feels like anyway, two thousand and five.
Michael, quick question that I probably should have already asked. Does that one point five seven six million dollars that we just reported include the Otter Creek water shed flat enough? Because we're, we're putting on a warning to take that off, including a separate one.
It does include that.
Okay, so is there a motion to award Vermont Digital lease, lease of a new copier for the municipal office in the amount of eighty-four dollars per month over sixty months? Well, unless there's a service fee, isn't there?
Well, will you own it at the end?
No.
There's a service fee, but I was going to include that, well, I did in the breakdown, but it, it's also, oh, it's higher than...
It's one sixty-nine thirty-two, but then the lease payment's less than the other vendor.
Both combined were less, so...
So I guess we should maybe make a motion to, um, award Vermont Digital for the lease of a new copier for the municipal offices in the amount of... Should we do it by year? The one thousand, one seventy-seven thirty-two for sixty months? Right?
I think I made a mistake.
Well, what would be for sixty months? So it'd be one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-two cents each year for five years.
I, I don't think that's total annual, that's not the total annual way, yeah, because the maintenance. For years, one sixty-nine... Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
So that's one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-two cents a year, which includes the eighty-four dollars a month for the lease and the one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents for the year for maintenance.
For five years, yes.
And, and there, and Vermont Digital maintenance is different than OSV maintenance. OSV maintenance is flat and Vermont Digital is per page. So I, I probably way overestimated on, on how much we would use. So they, when they come into service, they, they look at how many pages you've printed and that's what they charge you by.
Well, OSV, I couldn't even figure out how they came up with, they don't even list that. They talk about up to so many prints per month.
I'll make a motion to approve the Vermont Digital, hopefully we get her.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Award Vermont Digital, it would be...
We use them for everything around here anyway. And, and I did include the bottom, the total equipment fund for municipal equipment now.
All right, uh, Beaver Pond path repayment forgiveness, other options for project completion. Everybody saw that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I sincerely apologize for having to put this back on the agenda, but it's there. And, and on the screen, I've just, as well as inside your packets, I've given you a representative, representation of what this, of what B Trans is offering at this point. They want a project on the ground. The, B Trans is willing to split it up into two contracts, contract one and contract two. Contract one is from North Street, and this is the original design, from North Street to, to the pond. So that's through Frank's property, through Judy's property. Contract two would be the Omea portion of it, which they would really love to see happen, but have low expectation of it being completed and understand that it may never happen. So if the town needed to spend more of its financial resources through the grant line on contract one, then, then we would have that opportunity.
So my, my feeling is contract two is never going to happen.
Yeah.
So any surplus that would have gone to that is, is it going to be on us still? Even though we don't have somebody willing to cooperate with us?
No, so it's, so what, the... No, so it's a, the town's portion was a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Yeah.
And we were already over that because of contaminated soil costs and extra engineering costs, so that that budget had already been exceeded. Now, Coroner Peter Bishop, who I spoke to, says that if we had to use hypothetically, that if we had to use that one hundred and twenty-four thousand, it's still available to us if we needed to accomplish contract one. I mean, I highly, I can't imagine.
Right.
But yeah, so I hope that answers your question, so.
So if if we do it, if we do contract one and then contract two falls through, we're not liable for any additional expense. We just got the one twenty-four that that were, and if we don't apply that one twenty-four into contract one, all of it?
We're not liable for it, but we're not liable for it.
Okay, okay.
You know, the the contract award won't change.
Right.
The amounts will change, and I I spoke to Jenny Austin, who's the project manager through B-Trans or our B-Trans representative project manager, and the engineers would have to redo the quantities of the project, you know, there would be some engineering work that have to go in into this to change the project, but nothing you know, no, no huge feat to undertake.
It's amazing how the state has dragged their feet for so long on this. Now, all of a sudden, when there's a chance of it not going through, they're so interested and can't get involved enough.
What what I was told is they all went to a meeting after, you know, after we kind of triggered this and they went to a meeting and there were a lot of project representatives there that said, oh, yeah, we've got projects going through the same thing right now. So a lot of it's tied to COVID. So I think this is their kind of scramble to get something on the ground.
But yes.
So, I mean.
Yeah.
But there's no timeline on this, but you don't have to make a decision tonight or tomorrow or the next one.
Uh, no, I'm sure they'd like an answer sooner than.
Sure, yeah.
Of course they would. Twenty twenty-five is when the project is going to be pushed back to things like this.
All right, so you want to be, what I'm saying is.
Up to three years.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you might want to let this smooth for a little while for the agency. And you want to have a conversation to see where the board wants to go or what you need. Most inconvenient executive session to see what you want to pursue, and if you will still want to pursue your first option that you had, you just try to pull back your funding, you're not liable for that and abandon the project, I wouldn't give up on that yet. Because that's, I just wouldn't give up on that yet. It might be, I would just, yeah.
Yeah, and and I do have time to set aside an executive session because I've gone ahead and created the waiver evaluation summaries, which which tells us how much town, if if the town were to pursue the project, how much would we be expected to pay landowners for the right of ways if they weren't donating them? So at least you would just have that foundational cost. Some of them are pretty low and given the.
We're throughout the agency, we're, they have projects like this, letting, just not only here in Highland Bridges and all that, put back because of COVID and then it's all felt during that two-year period where nothing's really happening, so. So maybe we'll just see where that can go.
But have we heard back from landowners since the last time all the landowners were here and said the next time we spoke about this, all the landowners were going to be here to talk about it? It seems a little bit of cart before the horse again, which got us in this position to start with.
Hey, I agree with you. It's really tricky waters to navigate. So the reason for looking at the 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 waiver evaluation summaries is because if the if the board were to decide to move forward, then the landowners would receive letters with those summaries or or whatever negotiation starts at saying, okay, this is where we're at. The board wants to move forward with the project and this is how much the town is willing to give you for your land.
Right, but we told at least one landowner when they were here that we would wait to hear back from her to see how it would impact her business and if it was viable for her business to with the semi truck. So have we heard back from that one?
I spoke to her about it.
Okay.
And she had someone come out too and look at property and all that and raise a bunch of other concerns that we'd have to get over, you know, as I figured.
Okay, the second piece is, it's interesting that this is a B-Trans project that wants to start at North Street for a hiking trail to which there is no parking in that area, right? Or are we going to allow them now to park on the road over there to hike on this trail?
It wasn't a hike trail, it was a bike trail, so we.
Well, where they started, they're starting from some, well, it's a hike, it it was a hike bike trail is when it started. It was a multi pedestrian trail when we started. It it has changed, but I'm just curious, like all of a sudden people are just showing up at North Street and they're going from North Street to Beaver Pond?
I think the idea is there's already a connected route, and I'm just kind of telling you what B-Trans was telling me. That's why they're not super ambitious about contract two being awarded, because there's already sidewalk that can that can get a person from downtown to to North Street, or to the trailhead on North Street.
So they're saying, just just for clarification, the, it was like five hundred, close to six hundred thousand dollars, right, for the entire project? And if we don't do contract two, that all that amount, all that money is available for contract one?
They just want something on the ground.
What a waste of money.
Federal mon, federal taxpayer money or?
Yes, anybody's money that would be going to this project, absolutely, a hundred percent. I I mean, there are so many other ways to get to Beaver Pond. This is the least attractive way to get to Beaver Pond. And it's, how, I don't know.
I totally agree with you.
This, this was absurd when it came the first time around and people said, and it seems like we can't, for whatever reason collectively, we cannot say no to this and move on. And people have come here, different people have said no, people have called in, and I feel like this has been pushed forward by B-Trans and by our project, people that are online all the time. I mean, I remember sitting in my dining room, taking minutes during COVID while we had a meeting, and Frank was saying, this isn't what I want to do, I don't want to know my land, you know, it it wasn't a viable project then, and we've continued to spend money. And it it's going to be, at at this point, I mean, it's, there's nothing attractive about that section of getting to Beaver Pond. I mean, why wouldn't we want to highlight other areas if we wanted to do something for trails? I mean, spend money on making more trails on the backside of the pond or other places where we have the availability here appropriate for trails. I'm sorry, this is just, yeah.
My understanding is that we've already expended the money, so we're either out the money and no project, or we just continue the project and all we have is with that money that we have, that we're accountable for.
Or you have a shovel-ready project on the shelf to which we we, the money hasn't done anything.
Right, but what I'm saying is the one twenty-four is the one twenty-four. If we don't, if we stop this project tomorrow, we owe that money. So we might as well have them do the project and they put their money into it and continue the project.
So we're never going to have to expend more than one twenty-four because that was not the conversations that have happened here. I mean, we have been told we would be liable for other things. That was the conversation when we were here with landowners. If we have to put in, change the fence, she said the fence had razor wire, the fence was too low. They, the engineer aunt said that the fence would have to be higher. That's our responsibility. Did I misunderstand that?
No, but I think a lot of these things changed after we signed on to this.
But I'm saying one twenty-four is not where we're going to stay. That number's going to grow.
Oh, I think that's all they said we were accountable for. That's our match.
Yeah, our matches, our match is capped at one twenty-four.
That is not what they said when all the property owners were here. That, I I would seriously go back and watch that meeting. The one thing they said more than once, Judy's fence had razor wire on it, that would have to come down. Her fence was too low for bikers and a biker could like somehow, I don't know, stab themselves, and the but, and the fence would have to be higher and that would be our responsibility to replace. Unless that conversations have taken place, that was what was said when we were all here with all the property owners. It was never said, when we sat here with them, that a hundred and twenty-four thousand was where we were maxed out. No matter where we go further, we're not going to have to pay anymore. That that conversation, no one has said that, other than right now.
Well, I think a lot of it too, and and kind of in their defense, I guess, is that when they initiated this project, things were different and the landowners are the ones that are making it more costly because they're going ahead and doing things to alter their properties and change their properties that now they're revisiting and going back and saying, whoa, this fence wasn't here before, you know, the wire wasn't in here when we first looked at this property. Now it is, so now that becomes an added cost. Now we got to change that out, you know? So I think a lot of these things are happening because, you know, because it took so long or people are just not even paying attention to the bike path and just kind of maintaining their own properties. So I think those costs just keep elevating because we have to do more now than what previously existed.
So this is the impression that I had gotten from what we received since the last meeting, is that by eliminating contract two, all the money that would have been allocated to contract two will now be allocated to contract one. And that's what will prevent us from having any increase in our match.
And and there were, there were, there were items that the town would be responsible for outside the match, like soil, contaminated soil removal. But they were confident that 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 soil was located on the Omea parcel.
So my question would be similar to Lisa's, that there was a question about us having to replace Judy's fence and Frank's gate or build a gate. Is that also going to be covered under that?
I, you know, I could be incorrect here, but I was pretty confident that the fencing was a part of the project cost and included as a, as a shared cost, so it would be picked up through the, through the contract, through the agreement. Could be wrong.
Mike. At some meeting, I think that you had said that if we decided to not go forward with this at all, that there is the possibility of a loan forgiveness for one and two, whatever.
That's what he asked for and this is what they came back.
This is their, this is their first.
No, I know that, but if we just dig our heels in and say enough already, stop, no. Because I totally agree with Lisa.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's what Butch is telling us to do. I'm reading.
Yeah. And.
Well, is it still, can you still pursue that? I mean, can we just say we're just going to take a breather break here and not say or do anything? And then in three months' time, come back and say, no?
I'm sure I'll get an email when they're, you know, tired of waiting, but so I don't know what the timeline on that is, but I'm sure we've got a little breathing.
Well, things have changed due to COVID and costs have gone up, and the property owners certainly have a right to do anything they want with their property until there's a final agreement with doing the trail. Then because things have changed and things are different, we can say, whoa, it's too far out of control now. We can't deal with these elements. We have to say sorry and stop. And I don't know what we're on the hook for.
Hundred twenty-four thousand dollars.
But if nothing's been done, why? Is that for engineering fees and stuff like that?
A lot of money.
People who design stuff?
Yeah, all design.
So can I throw this out here as a suggestion? We're we're doing a lot of hypotheticals right now. We don't know the answers to them. And it sounds like we have a resource that is willing to help us and help Michael, so can we, Michael, can we ask you to move that ball forward?
Yeah. I'll I'll add, I've 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 had to spend a lot of time researching this project. There, there's no letter of support from Omea contained in the application, which could have shut the project down. Lisa might not agree to this, but I think the trail that was proposed in the scoping study in twenty seventeen is pleasant. Um, but and and it would have been great to have an opinion like that at the scoping study. I mean, for someone to say, this is stupid, you know, like, why would we waste time on it? That, and that going into further scoping studies, like the one we may be doing if we get the tri-town loop, that feedback is so important to have and, you know, at at the front end of it. And maybe it was there for this one too. But it's a very pleasant, meandering, meandering path that goes along the quarry and, but there just wasn't enough stakeholder involvement. And now we're suffering a lot of scope creep because of it.
Well, why doesn't B-Trans have some accountability for that?
I think they do.
Well, if if there was no letter of support for one of the primary landowners, that 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 seems to be a pretty big misstep on their behalf, along with the engineering. I mean, as they're going forward and, you know, with a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, we've said here at meetings, said, don't do anything else, don't do anything else. We were at nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, and then all of a sudden, boom, we were up because they were continuing the next time they came at the meeting, that they continued on and and changed and done this and done that. So when you say we're on the hook for a hundred and twenty-four, I I I feel like we're kind of like the little hillbillies here that have been taken advantage of because we have said no time and time again to them and, and I said this to you, Michael, privately. I think that they, that Jenny Austin, I've never seen anyone want to drive a path forward so hard and so fast. And I mean, I can go back and pull up the minutes and say, I know we were at nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars and we said, stop, we're doing anything else. And the next time they came, we popped up and we have all these other different plans to look at, and we had never talked to landowners again. So I think there's some culpability with the state and with the engineering agency. And I think saying we're on the hook for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is a big gulp to swallow.
Thanks, Butch.
We have a task.
But they have to travel.
We can get out of that.
We can do it.
We can do it.
Is it a bike path?
Yeah.
All right, any new business draft warning for the town meeting? Did you want to talk about the league membership or you just threw that in there for?
Um. The, oh, I I I figured it would just be included in the, in the town budget review.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I've included, that information was asked for at our last meeting.
Okay.
What I did, I gave you a comparable as well, so I gave you this year's, this year's is all stapled together and last year's is stapled together.
Okay. So it's just more for reference?
Yeah. And ignore the check marks, that's just housework. Yeah, that's why I circled down on the bottom left, eleven eighteen twenty twenty-one. Because that was last year's. They do an audit at the end of the year for this, and I wonder if it'll come down, just because the pool salaries came, are coming down.
I don't think so. I think they do an adjustment of, like, they'll give you numbers and then they do an adjustment after, but it's like right up front kind of, if they give you discount stuff. But I do have to say that the town's mod rate is extremely good.
Yeah.
Because anything like one or under is good, and ours is point eight nine, so that's really good.
Hey, you included the town proctor warning for town meeting?
Nothing too exciting in there. I can add some numbers now that we have approved budgets at the select board level. Big question was to Lisa and I think Celia had the answer for it, but it was about the five school district.
We just have board.
For three years? Then I spoke to BLCT a little bit about, I know the board had once spoken to me about, a lot of different towns are considering the appointment of treasurer and clerk. I kind of went over what that process would look like at a town meeting and it was a bit confusing because you'd have to, you'd have to make sure the moderator was really on board with it because he'd have to ask, do you want to appoint this, do you want to appoint this? But then immediately following, you'd have to say, oh, do you want to elect and elect? And you'd still want to elect because you'd want somebody to hold that position for the forty-five days when, because that's how long. So it was suggested to hold that off for a, the treasurer serves three-year terms.
So a non-election year.
So save it for a non-election year. I'm not sure if that was their advice, but it did seem the easiest route.
Any thoughts, questions?
And then I guess eventually we do have to figure out whether we're doing it in person or on Zoom. I've got a couple of trainings through the LCT next week on town meeting. So I guess we could wait till our next meeting to make that decision, want to have a little bit more information, but.
I don't know, I think, what's everybody's opinion?
Will the school let us use the gym?
Yeah, well, we work fully ours in person also. It's our understanding, it's our understanding that you cannot vote if you are not in person.
I say we have it in person.
I'd rather have it in person.
Because there's no way to do checklist if you're not in person. Anybody opposed?
Okay, I think we have it in person, we have it for a while.
Yeah, because that's the only way you can do things from the floor, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah, I'm excited.
It's ready to be your first one?
Anything else, anybody have? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I made it to the Pawtucket meeting, I made it to the Pawtucket town meeting when we left out of here because we had ours on Zoom.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was fun. I spoke up, probably shouldn't have, but learned my lesson.
Want to see what it was like on the other side of the fence.
All right, being no other business, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.